Thirty four.
The only question I've got.
See the library.
Try what?
Library budget. And we can start setting it.
My what? Buy a jacket back to.
Yeah, I have some beer dia queso on my skirt right now. Every time I wear it, I get something orange on. Since brainwash.
Where did he go?
Cable, college meeting pledge since they came back. With the question of legal.
May the United States of America and to the Republic. Defense, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and.
Good evening, everyone. It's six oh three. This is the August fourteenth. Public hearing for the twenty twenty six third county budget. We're gonna have a public hearing, so. Need a motion to open the public hearing. I'll make that motion. Have motion by Dave.
Second it.
Seconded by Cassie. Okay, the public hearing is open. The budget has been published in gateway. As required, so we're not gonna read. Line by line because we've been here for three hundred days. So. It's open for discussions, public having comments.
Okay, so we've had a discussion about elected official pay. Now we're gonna do this across the board. Um, as of right now. There's sixty four thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars. For Michaeline's pay.
That's putting me back.
Yeah, but if you remember the last, the last. The last council meeting, we tabled that decision.
Okay.
We did not, we did not vote in favor of any of that.
Okay.
So that's a moot point.
Great. So are we gonna have the discussion about collective official pay?
It's a public hearing.
First deputies, deputy pay, clerk pay, administrator pay.
I'll tell you right now. We are probably, this is my thought. I don't really wanna make any decisions on this until we have a full board. I don't know, because we have till September fifteenth. I don't know what, if anybody wants some change they wanna make, we can go through them. I don't, it's fine. I mean, Dave.
We, we approved it, approved this total amount is what you're saying, right?
Well, it doesn't matter.
We have to find tenants, we can find.
Yeah, because we still have to have the final adoption. And at that time. So we, we would have actually have. We'd have next meeting. And we would actually have. Then the, then our, our September meeting. You said September fifteenth, right?
That's the adoption.
September fifteenth will be the adoption date.
Yeah.
So.
So just, just so everybody, so what, what are we talking about like retooling? Like putting all one pool, even the corner, and then just dividing it by that amount? Because we have had some positions pay more because. They're just different, you know what I mean? Like.
Right, some positions have more responsibility than others, and if you look at the fact book, in every county, they're not all paid the same. They're paid different rate depending.
They are, but it's not five thousand dollars different. Like a two thousand dollar difference, a three thousand dollar difference, not a ten grand. Not twelve grand.
Well, that's what I was getting paid last year.
The year before.
Year before.
Well, I think Cassandra had the book last time. Do you happen to have that?
I'm not asking for that much of a raise. I'm just asking for it to be put back where it was last year.
Because we, because we, we actually cut it the year before that. We cut it in twenty, we cut it in twenty-four for twenty-five.
We've debated, we, over the years, we've debated this many times about the auditors paying so much higher, but I mean, in fairness. Whoever the auditor is. The auditor sort of is the mother of the county. The auditor is the kind of the one that keeps, helps other officials. Lead officials keep their departments. In line and, and help, you know what I mean? Regardless of who it is.
Yeah.
Right? I mean.
Yeah, I agree. But, but, but ten thousand dollars is.
And there's three, she has three people in her office.
Yes, and I used to have four people, and so now.
I have one. The reporter has one, Wayne has one. I'm sorry, but I mean.
And, and for.
And, and I was gonna say, I don't think the surveyor ever gave any up.
They took the one away.
Right, right, you didn't have anybody. And, and the only thing is too, the stipend, it says, it says per the IC code, well, that IC code just says May, it doesn't say.
Yeah, I know, I, I said you could mark that out.
It doesn't say child. So that, that's a, that's a moot point. Okay, what?
I guess my question is. First, I'm gonna bring up the planning commission a little bit, and then I'll bring it into the audit. First of all, you guys have talked about, um. Making three full times. In the planning commission, but getting the pay raise for two of the full-time people.
The planning commission has talked about having three people.
Right, yeah.
We've always talked about getting rid of one full-time.
Why not? Was because of extra work responsibilities being placed on those people. So. Mike, maybe I'm overstepping, but Michaeline used to have four people in her office. And she only has three now, so we're basing, um, possible pay raises on that type of thing. I guess I would like to know then, why aren't the three ladies that are left in there able to split up? The pay from the person they're not gonna replace.
Yeah, cuz they had to take on the extra workload.
Yeah, they had to take on the extra workload and stuff.
But, but everybody's working seven hours a day and getting all the work done.
Well.
Right?
Everyone comes into work waiting for money today. There, you know what I mean? It's consistent.
Well, I mean, we can, we can take all this, we need to, we need to talk about it.
I mean, if you feel more comfortable with having a full board here.
I, I do, Dave. I, I, I do, I do, because this is a pretty, there's some pretty big decisions. And, I mean. I thought Bill was gonna be here, but.
Well, I call us cuz he's been the surveyor before.
He wasn't gonna be here. He just texted me a few minutes ago. And. And while we're on that, just, just some follow-up for the planning commission. Plan commission's not gonna like this, but I'm gonna say it anyways.
Same.
So. The whole reason. That they hired. The one person that left. Was because there was gonna be all this load work of all these peer inspections and all that. And that never came, that never happened.
It's true.
That never happened. So. I don't know how, I don't know how the plan com- commission. They're gonna have to justify why they need another full-time person. I mean, now. They're getting by, and I know they're not. Doing as much as they should, but they're getting by with one full-time and two part-time.
I'm gonna, I wanna, I wanna.
One full-time, one part.
I'm gonna.
Well, is all we have right now.
For Jean. I'm concerned Jean's part-time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is Jean, is Jean working for free?
No.
No. No, that's three people. I just.
We are very blessed to have Jean.
Yes.
I, I, I'm on the planning commission and, and I want the public to understand, and I think these two ladies. Will agree with me. Speak up if you don't please. The planning commission right now is under a major reconstruction. I think it's doing well. I think the reconstruction is going well. We're, we're in the process of rewriting a, a sound, strict, solid. Solar ordinance. That probably, that will be completed by February, right? Jean Pugh is working diligently and doing a great job for us. And stepped in there and bailed us, bailed the planning commission out. Bailed us out and doing a great job. But he wants to leave.
At what?
So. We have put out. That this job is open. And I think the ladies will also agree with me that our. Our applicants. Aren't the best applicants in the world. We would love to get somebody much more experienced, much, they could step right in and take the bull by the horn. Right now, we are not finding that. Now, I, I'm not suggesting that we do anything different, but I'm giving you an insight on the planning commission. Right now, we're gonna re-interview a couple people. We're gonna re-interview one person, I think, and interview another one for the job. But. Our concern is. Hiring somebody. That's not capable of doing the job. That, that. That we're gonna be disappointed we hire him because our applicant force out there, the people that we're interviewing. We're not sure that they can handle the job. And it'll be, it will be a while. Jean agrees that it'll kind of be on the job training, that he'll agree to work with the, when we hire somebody. He'll work with them a few weeks to kind of lead them into the job. So, right now, with, with the help, uh, Robbie's, Robbie's stepping up and doing a great job. That's my opinion. But right now, we are. Basically reforming and, and reconstituting and rejuvenating the planning commission, and it's going to take. A little bit of time. We don't take a whole gob of time, but it's gonna take some time to get that, and, and we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, I, I'll add this, and I know exactly what you're saying when we, when they add the full-time position, what it is for. Our thought process was. When we lost somebody out there, it hurt, and it hurt bad. I mean, it, it shut down. That department. So when we started to look at the staffing of them, the thought process was having two full-timers. No part-timers. You always have somebody. That can do the entire job up there. When the other one's out, or if we ever gotten a pinch. So we were cutting it from four people to three. And, you know, so that was again, that was just our thought process.
So.
We had.
You said the key word in there. If.
Right. That's our first step, we can see. Yep. I mean.
I mean.
But, but we don't have elected officials.
Right.
In our department, so you can't compare the planning department to any of the other, you just can't. You're comparing apples to oranges. If we had an elected official sitting in that chair, that would be different, but we don't have that luxury. We have a board.
Some states do.
They do.
Some do, absolutely.
And, and there's also a full board that makes up for that, you know what I mean?
And I think where our challenge comes in is that again, the people that are in that office, the supervision. They, they report to the board. Or to the building commissioner. We're having a hard time finding the right person for that. So it, it's just, it's a very different animal. And again, I mean, if you guys want us to stick with two-part-time, one full, and well, one full-time. And keep in mind too, we're getting rid of the code enforcement. So if we went back to what it was, it would be one full-time, two part-time. Plus the building commissioner.
Right.
So four people.
Right.
So, I mean.
But I mean, two, two, two part-time are way cheaper than one full-time. I mean, if, if we're just talking about money, okay? If we're just talking about money. You know, probably, probably half. I'm gonna guess.
And I understand how that works, the benefits, the, I understand all of that. I mean, you know, the reality is our hope was that. We could get down to the three, have good, solid people that can do the job. A lot harder to find part-time work than it is full-time employees. So finding the right people. Is where the challenge comes in. Even right now, I will tell you that, you know, our new. Administrator is doing an amazing job, and I was up there the other day to drop something off, and the phone's ringing, there's people there. The only other person in that office right now is our code enforcement, and she's out doing code enforcement. And. You know, and that phone rings. Non-stop, all day.
So you see what Flack County's doing?
What?
They're combining the, um. Planning Commission Director with, uh. With Nate Orger's job.
Oh, the. Whatever, whatever his job is.
They're combining those.
Economic development and planning, that seems to be.
That seems. Like something that Jennifer would like.
But Nate's involved, he's involved in so much other stuff. I mean.
I just thought that was an interesting, yeah.
And in, in the end, it's whatever.
I mean. I mean, the, the, the only thing I'll say about it, I'm gonna say this now. I've known you, Bert, for a couple of years, okay? And. I know how you are, okay? I know how you fight against stuff if you need to, if you don't think it's right. And. I mean, I don't know. If you think it's right, al- almost makes me wanna think that it is right. I mean, just because.
You can't just.
Because you care about the office, I, I, I get that, but. It's, it's hard from our, our point, I feel, because. When we hired that person full-time.
I couldn't agree more.
We did it only because of there was all this speculation how we were sold the bill of goods. About what was gonna happen, and it never happened.
Right. And I couldn't agree more. I mean, I agree with.
So in turn.
I know Glenn would agree with you.
I mean.
That when we hired, when they moved to being a full-time.
Oh, yeah.
What was supposed to happen?
It never happened.
So our thought process.
But we're going from four to three.
Right. But our thought process again was to take code enforcement. Wrap it into a second, be. Planning commission person, so basic, or ideally, if we could get the right building inspector, that's who should be doing code enforcement. So.
Well, it seems like somebody that's working up there ought to be in charge of that office.
I would.
We determined this, Todd, when we do hire the building inspector, they are going to be in charge of the office.
Somebody has to be.
We, we understand that, and that, that is our goal, is to make. The building inspector. The, the supervisor. Personnel, but we've got, we, we, that job pays forty-eight thousand dollars a year, and, and I'm not suggesting we raise that, that's not my point. But we're, we are not getting for applicants to step in and maintain that office for forty-eight thousand a year, not saying we raise it. But. That is our, I, I think is our problem.
It's, we get one or the other.
Do you agree, one? It, it's.
Well, I feel like that almost across the board here, I mean, not just one office. I'm not trying to be rude. I love it here. I've been here eighteen years. I'm not gonna complain about the pay. But in order to get good applicants anywhere, the whole pay scale gets ready to double across the board. So that's the reality.
Right.
To answer, to answer your question, Todd, you were concerned about. Everybody being a chief and no Indians. Our goal is, and correct me if I'm wrong, ladies, when we get a building inspector in there and he is the hired building inspector. He will become the supervisor of that office.
It has to be because. None of us have authority as one person for anything.
Well, yeah, cuz right now, if you got this one board member going in there and even running the office, that's not, that's not representative.
And, and our, and our struggle has been with the candidate pool, is we either find people that have the supervisory skills, office skills.
Or they have the other.
Or they have the other, but finding somebody that can do both. So now what we've gotta look for is somebody who we think has the. Will. And ability to learn one or the other of those skills, but. And it's just not.
I would think, I would think being the office administrator, the, the director, or the boss, if you wanna say, would be easier than trying. I would think, I would think being the office administrator, the, the director, or the boss, if you wanna say, would be easier than trying to teach somebody. To be a building inspector.
You would think, yes.
I mean, I don't know. Well, I, I don't know, I don't know, I'm just.
There's gonna be a combination of the code enforcer and the building inspector. Maybe there's an opportunity, cuz I mean, the other thing is. In fairness, let's, let's say, I'm just gonna pick a number, let's say if we went from forty-eight to sixty-eight. We wanted to attract, attract somebody. At that caliber, but then I think you would wanna like make sure they had certain qualifications, like maybe some kind of an engineering background, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, it wouldn't be fair just to hire somebody then. Not that we don't have, couldn't probably find some really great carpenters, but, but I don't know, a carpenter has forty years of experience, and maybe built bridges and factories and.
On.
You know, I don't know, he'd like, I don't know how you make that criteria, but you would want them to have more qualifications if you're gonna pay them.
You can still be.
Absolutely, and that's why I think, when, I think if Todd brought it up, and I had mentioned it too, I think that it'd be really nice if we had. Pay scales instead of flat ordinances, because again.
Oh, I agree.
Depending on who you're hiring, just because I hire somebody, they may not be worth what the ordinance pays.
I agree.
And.
Do you remember this though, Todd, like?
Yeah, it sounds like you guys tried, it didn't go so.
We talked about this years ago when this came up, and then, and then we got bows, and then we just left it.
Yeah.
But we took a lot of applicants, and we got applicants that were interested, if we would make it up, cuz they were retired.
Right.
But they were retired building engineers and things like that.
Yeah.
They were okay with the pay. But they didn't wanna be listed as full-time, because then it messed up their. Their income, I'm just going, I, I'm not on your board, so I'm not trying to like throw something out there.
That's just what I'm saying.
You might be able to find somebody that's in their sixties, that's retired. That is willing to take forty-eight thousand a year, but they only wanna be on paper working thirty, you know, thirty hours a week or whatever.
Right.
I'm just saying. Maybe it's something that your work can consider.
That was our goal. We felt like, in, in the end, we're, we felt like we were cutting the budget, in all fairness, we don't have, the board has no visibility to the cost of our insurance.
Right.
And if that's something that. Each of the departments should be looking at, in my opinion, that should be somehow tied to our budget so that we can see it. Because otherwise, we're working with what we have. In all fairness.
Well, I think that, that may just be, Mike only would know bear anybody, that might just be a strictly accounting thing. Trying to put perf and all that stuff in every budget. I mean, I don't know. Would that be a nightmare? Do you think it would be?
It's all, it's in the commissioner's budget for each fund.
With, with the exception for the park boards, not.
No. Has their own. Each individual fund has its own, but county general does.
All of the buildings, everybody here. So. I think that's, yeah, he's, everybody knows, but I don't know if it would be, uh, might be worthwhile to put together a work study next year for fiscal twenty-seven.
Or you make any upheavals and dramatic changes, so it can be mined out better, it's probably, we're in the last hour now, I don't know, of time to be able to do.
At least give us the, the tools that we need, like, help us understand, make sure that, you know, if an average employee's benefits come to this, that each department head or elected official understand. How much money there, again, I have no idea that we're actually spending more money on paper when we did it, we were coming out twelve thousand dollars less than last year's budget.
Yeah. And. And to something Robert said, we, we had a conversation about this, about. About the, of the pay ranges. I mean. Just for instance, let's say the, the starting salary for. For a clerk is forty thousand, whatever. Make the pay range maybe from thirty-five. To forty thousand. Or maybe make it higher. You know, for, for everybody else too, and then. Leave it up to every department head, or elected official department head, to actually physically. Do an evaluation of that person, and we would not.
Positively, that's what we have.
Well, it's not happening.
And then does happen, it was, is everyone just went to the top after ninety days.
So.
Doesn't have pay ranges for the clerks and the deputies like.
Not right now.
You, you can, you, I'm saying that's what we should do.
I thought you said it was like that.
And then, no, no, it should be, and then so if we make the range thirty to forty, well, we only, we'll only let them have. Thirty thousand to start with, and then, there's gonna be no pay raises until. Until everybody sees that, hey, this person is really extraordinary, they're going, they're going out of the way. Then, they should get a pay raise maybe after ninety days, or, or whatever the case may be, and that makes it. Fairer for everybody, and. And it gives maybe that person that knows, hey, I'm coming here at thirty thousand, but, man, if I'm really good. I might get, you know, a three thousand dollar raise in ninety days.
Gives incentive.
I mean, I don't know, that's just, I know we can't do it this year, there's no way. I mean, that's something we would have to start working on, like, the first of next year.
Yeah, and, and we also, just haven't even scratched the surface of SB one, I happened to talk to Andy Miles there, he's like, you know, I'm like, I'm like. He said that he's been helping a lot, they've been helping a lot with their county, then they're excited if we do, they heard on the, that we mentioned at the last meeting about possibly having them help us. We probably need that more than anything, to see what the impact of that is, because we still gotta decide, are we gonna shift, and we're gonna put lit tax in, and wheel tax, or are we gonna cut our budget?
Well, I'm not voting for any tax, I'm not voting, I, I am going to record.
Or stencil or one.
Ever since I've been here, I am not voting for any tax increase for anything.
I'm not either.
So I'm just saying, you might wanna be cautious about increasing too many things.
If they cut it, I mean. I, I think we've made, we've made the statement, if we do have to cut it. I mean, it's gonna have to be. Gonna probably have to be raises. May have to be. Takeable vehicles, I don't know, we have to look at where all the big costs are.
And that would be. If the state comes in and mandates that we have to cut this budget.
Which they probably will.
Which they probably will. Then we'll probably. In all fairness to the elected officials, and, and supervisors, it should be up to them, you know, I mean, we, if the state comes in here and says, we've, this has gotta be cut four percent. We could probably sit down and do it, but we probably wouldn't be able to do it in the fairest way, because we don't need, we don't know. Wh- where, if we tell these ladies and these gentlemen, what, they have to cut their.
Who's gonna defend their fiefdom, that's the job of the council, is to take that budget, and if they say four percent, the council takes it and cuts it four percent, that's just how it works.
Yeah, but I, I, I think we ought to give the office holders in fairness the opportunity, if we come, come and say, well, we've gotta cut your budget four percent. Do you wanna do it, or do you want us to do it?
Well, that's.
I, I think in fairness, we ought to give them the fullest opportunity.
Well, I fear you have to think about that, let's say it is four percent.
Well, I'm just using that number.
You, you would almost. I don't know if you could, you, you really couldn't do. I guess you could do four, four percent by every department, if it came out to that.
Done it before.
I guess it'd still work out.
Potentially, it's, cuz some departments have a larger chunk of the budget.
Yeah, see, that, that's where you get into.
Yeah.
It's like an inverse square rule deal.
That's what I'm saying, that's what the council usually does it, but we've done it, yeah. That's not fair, it's not a rule.
Yeah.
You might have some budget.
Yeah, you've got the planning department.
Four thousand dollars.
That's a huge number, we don't.
Then you know the judge's budget.
It's a, the four percent of seventy thousand, percent of two million is.
It's relative, yeah.
It's just gonna be a lot more for some, because they have a bigger budget.
Yeah.
I mean, plain simple.
Well, as far as this goes, though, we, last time we talked about flying it, right, and we're gonna wait and see if they say the cut.
About this, when I turned in my budget, you did not have the right numbers down in here that I asked for, cuz I even went in front of. The commissioners and asked them.
Right, and then when the council said just put three percent, that's what I did, was just put three percent. So it'll be up to them if they wanna raise it or not raise it.
What, what was that, what was that talk about, about the?
So I asked for the elected official, again, the first deputy pay and the treasurer's office to be raised. To be comparable to the clerk, not what they make, but comparable. To what the clerk and the auditor makes. More money than what they make, but more in the treasurer's office, and then, first deputy, I asked for a raise two, which would have been eighty percent of what I asked for me. Cuz that, I heard that at a meeting too, like, and your first deputy should make eighty percent of what the elected official.
So right now, you're, you're making, you're making the exact same as the recorder.
Yes.
Correct.
You're making anything close to the auditor or the clerk.
Well, they, well, they. The, 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 the auditor's pay where you see in there is, is not what is necessarily gonna be, okay, that's sixty-four thousand, that's a number that we did not, we, we voted the table on that, it still got put in regardless.
Well, cuz you said the table.
Yeah.
That didn't mean take it out.
Once you tabled, we didn't vote for people, so that means take it out. Plain simple, I mean, we didn't prove it, so.
No, it wasn't approved, but you haven't approved the budget yet either.
Right, yeah, so we got still time to change all that, so. So the clerk says fifty-two eight thirty-nine plus what?
Plus she gets paid for election board and she gets paid for stipend. The clerk, oh, you, oh, you're talking about her clerk?
No, I'm just comparing, you know, like, slipped it to you, you're gonna look at that book. But no, fifty-two eight twenty-five, fifty-two eight thirty-nine, it's almost the exact same amount.
Same thing.
The clerk's office has the extra pay for the extra stocks, if that's what it is.
Pause down, so, mine was fifty-one, the auditor was fifty-six, for, the clerk is fifty-four, two, two eighty-six, a center fifty-four, two eighty-six, and that's not even a state office. And then the reporter's fifty-one, seven sixty, so. The surveyor, I don't know.
The reporter is forty-seven.
Thing, I don't know if that works, okay, and then our first deputy, there's, I mean, the first. Chief deputy auditor is forty-four thousand, mine forty, the clerk's is forty-one. The assessor does not have a first deputy, they don't have to, and then the recorder forty thousand, so none of them are even. I took that out of the back book.
Yeah.
From the chair.
Can you repeat what you were saying about the extras or something?
Yeah, I mean, the elected official for the clerk for next year of the budget that asked is fifty-two, three eighty-nine, or eight thirty-nine. And the others are fifty-two, the other two are fifty-two, eight thirty-five. Like, we're not the ones that are doing the add-ons, those, the clerk's add-ons are statutory, so like, I'm not gonna, I, I will not commit to saying that that's part of her salary. Where the state says we have to do that, I would, that would be just like, then I'm gonna start saying that we're gonna get into, try to fight what we pay the, uh.
Her stipend on the clerk is not statutory, it's a maybe, just like the auditor's stipend.
I think it's shall.
No, it's, I looked it up, it's not.
I knew with the, oh, number one.
Is that on page fourteen?
Yeah, it's on page fourteen, Dave.
Cuz she had to come before you and ask for your approval.
Is on page, clerk's is on page one.
For her salary, but where's the election board?
Election board's on, oh, sorry, sorry.
The election board's fourteen.
Yes, so where's, where, where is the stipend at? I didn't see it on there, is that an election board?
Um, I don't know where she. Maybe.
No, that's, that's.
No, she didn't put it in here this time, but she didn't put it in last time either, she came before you guys and asked for it.
Well, if she didn't put it in there, we can forget about that stipend.
Yeah, she didn't put it in there this time.
The highway grass administrator bookkeeper makes forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars a year.
Thirty hours a week and not thirty-seven for one thing. To start with, and once again. It's back to like the planning commission, I mean. The bookkeeper's got a lot of responsibility out there.
First deputy when I'm, when I'm not there.
I understand that.
Uh, Dave, the other thing that the clerk gets is from the election board, she gets paid for election board meetings.
Right, yeah. Yeah, the other election board members also get paid though too, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's another thing too, like, I, I don't wanna make boards that you get paid. Salary either, that's really not right to do that.
See. Personally means. If a person is working during the day. And they go to a meeting that has. That has a per diem. They should have to choose one or the other. You can't get both.
Well, I, I think the election board meets outside of the.
No, they've been.
No, they meet right during the day, cuz my husband's on the election board, they meet right up there.
Above something that were outside, I mean.
And, I mean, there's, there's other people that are on, that are on, that are on boards getting per diem, and they're getting their regular pay, and it's during the day. And that's not right. You gotta, you should have to choose one or the other. Do you wanna take that hundred dollars for P two B O or whatever, is it sitting there for an hour, then you should take an hour off your regular job, you shouldn't get paid for B O. Cuz that's double-dipping, and that's not.
Put a lot of thought in these, cuz some of these positions are going up for election next year.
But these positions aren't, I'm not talking election.
No, I'm just saying, although, but the ones that are, though, we need to think about those too, that way it's established by the time election time starts.
Well, we can't, we have to change it, we can't change it next year.
Right.
You know?
Well, just in the sense of, the one person on the P two B O board, I think I'm safe to say, cuz I heard the lady talking about, she does take off. Uh, you know, neighbors, and she, she doesn't double-dip it now.
No.
That's not what she told me.
Okay, well, I don't know.
Directly, cuz I asked.
That's just where I.
I guess the person asked you payroll. They would know, yeah.
There's a P two B O, B O meeting coming up here. Real soon.
Same day as tax sale.
Yeah, same day as tax sale.
Yeah, that's right. Which is, what, what day is that?
September eighteen.
Cause I'm gonna come buy something. Buy the estates, five thousand lots, twenty dollars.
I have one question, I know you said that you weren't gonna go through the number, what is our total budget?
For the planning commission?
No, no.
So, I'm one of these things in someplace, sir.
For the whole county?
Yeah.
Not just county general?
Just the whole, what is the entire budget for?
Well, you can probably leave out the high, the highway's probably separate. Cuz, well, that's not.
It, the tax, no tax money goes into the highway garage?
Other than seed it, for the bridges, but the rest of it's gas tax.
Okay.
The whole budget is sixteen million, four hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred seven dollars.
Do you know what it was last year? You know.
It's, it's on, it's on, it was on the sheet we had last, you have the ones in this week, Cassie? It, it was on that, because it was up like.
By way, Howard, this was yours from the last meeting.
Oh, I, I thought, I thought it was in here. So. Let me ask you this. So that sixteen million.
That's for all those funds added together.
Do we know? Do we know what that amount was without all the additional appropriations?
The sixteen million is for next year for, uh, twenty twenty.
No, but I mean.
Oh.
Do, do we know? See, last year's budget I thought was like. I don't know, it was like twelve.
Minus the highway.
Minus the highway. So. The budget for last year, that was not, that was not with all the additional appropriations that were added on. So what I'm saying, the budget for this year.
You mean, what's the percentage of what we have there?
If it's, if it's twelve million.
Yeah.
With all the appropriations were made, there might be fifteen.
More, for sure.
You know, is what I'm saying, so.
Like, when sixteen million was.
So that, so that's what I'm trying to do there.
So I, I think.
This year's budget is sixteen million, that's your.
Right, I got yours too.
Right.
And so what you're saying is, when we're hearing the appropriations, I wanna make sure I'm understanding.
But this doesn't include the highway.
When people are talking in front of you for appropriations, sometimes, that's going above their budget, but sometimes those appropriations are just moving money.
Well, that's a transfer then.
No, that's a transfer.
That's a transfer.
So do we know how many, I, I mean, I would like to know, I would be curious as a citizen. What. So do we know how many, I, I mean, I would like to know, I would be curious as a citizen, what.
What the amount is.
We are, when we do our budgets, like, and then. This right here, and how much we actually spend, exactly.
I mean. Normally, like, this is, this looks like the report out of Gateway, you used to run one, I don't know, but have the budget status. This shouldn't have allowed. Had, if, what, each, we.
Doesn't tell us if we're doing a good job or a bad job.
Does, did, did this come out of our gateway after the conversation with Lau?
That's Lau.
Okay, what was the one that used to, it, it, it wasn't this thick, and it didn't have this many columns, and it just, it had, it was a budget status, like. This is what you asked for on your budget, this is what you spent.
That's what I want.
We, we have a report like that, we can run, we would always do that in the budget workshop, build a note, if, cause you can look and see. Golly, you're not even spent, you know, it's halfway through, you haven't spent half of your budget. So, so why do you need that? So who, who has that capability, now, the thing is, like, the thing is, though, is it's not as far off as what you think. It's because, when you were talking about the appropriations, there are some funds that collect, like, for example, like the, um, CVC. They collect forty-eight thousand a year, but they have to appropriate that, so they ask for an appropriate, there's, there are home room funds, there are many funds. That are like that, where they ask, well, exactly, there are many funds.
And that's what I'd be curious, so, one, how much did our budget increase?
So, so, so here's the thing, so the question that you're asking is, so the state tracks that.
Right.
So, and what happens is, is that when we go to budget, budget time this year, if we were an inordinate amount over. That gets subtracted from our twenty twenty-six budget, so we, we don't have the, the freedom, that's why we're saying, we don't wanna do additional appropriations. Cause that, we are reduced by that amount next year that we're, because we're already at the maximum amount of the levy. If we had a lot of room in the levy, that might be a different story. We know. But we're at the max levy, and so what would happen is, they would, and they may do that to the fact, if, if it is two million. Then, they might look at it, and they might say, okay, we're also reducing your twenty twenty-six budget by this amount too, because you exceeded your budget.
Yeah, when I, I have to fill out a form for the state that goes on Gateway.
Right.
And it, it, I have to put. How much the bu- original budget was, how much has been spent, how much they're asking for, if there was anything to be reduced, it's a whole big form.
Right, well, but.
That's all on Gateway, if you, you'll see all those.
That's to your point.
It's still.
Technically, we never, we're never allowed to go over the budget. We end up paying for it on the other end, because that's why we, that's the whole, otherwise, why would you make a budget? If you could just go over and you could have additional appropriations, that's not how it works.
Right, right.
Yeah. Sorry, but. No, your question from Tom. Oh, go ahead.
Is that report you're looking for, the combined ledger by location, that's, we do that?
There is, that's one, one place, you can find a couple places, that's one of them, yes, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, my office and the reporter's office, we each keep our own ledgers of our own budgets, and I compare it to the funds ledger in Lau. And make sure it's right.
Technically, every department is supposed to do that at the end of every. And we're supposed to have a report every month. You guys do it. Yes, yeah. Yeah, we know what you do.
Preparation thing, so, I don't know, I'm not picking on anybody with the shared part, you give them extra money, does that come out of our next year's budget?
So, some of the appropriations, we did it out of seed it in different places, like Tom was saying, so they're not, they're not things that were, uh. It, it's not the same way that they look at the budget, will we be scrutinized for some of those? Yes, yes. Yeah, but overall, they're not, they're not direct, county general. It's not, it's not out of hand. It's not, yeah. But if it did get out of hand, we would pay for it next year. Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
No, it was a good question. Yeah.
Very long now.
So, we've got another question, huh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just another question, it's more of a process question. Um, since this is a, a public hearing, it sounds like you, you guys might not approve the budget tonight. Does that mean there'll be another public hearing in September before that?
We will approve this amount tonight. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and now, we can still make changes of, within the lines, but we will, we will approve this amount and let the, the public know. It's gonna be sixteen million, four hundred forty-one, sixty-seven, or whatever we said, or, we will approve that amount tonight, or just prove it, yeah.
My understanding is that you guys, so now you guys can go and make tweets to it, but you can't increase it without another.
Absolutely not.
So, you can decrease it, but they can't increase.
Yes, and I have the focus gonna know what.
And then the adoption hearing, the adoption hearing is September fifteenth. So this is, that's been stoned until September fifteenth.
But it will not change after the fifteenth, well, without moving things around, that's why we do additionals, but. I'll just say, when I first started, we used to have so many additionals every night, when I worked with Mark Smith. It's, no, it's, it got way better, because what we told people was, we're not gonna, it was different now, but I mean, what we would say is. This is what you're allowed to increase your budget by, but please move it around in there, so you don't have to come to us for additionals, and it worked, and it worked pretty well. Yeah, cause you can transfer in your own, and, and the, and the, and series number, without any. Right, but if, if, if you're, if you're having to move things out of postage all the time, you've got two million in postage. There's a reason. Move it somewhere, you know, anywhere, cut it, what we used to do. Yeah. All right, do we have any other public comment? So. I don't know what, how we wanna work the airport into all this. Uh, we'll have to go through, um, the other, we got North Jetson too, right? Yeah. Yeah.
So, they're part of, they're advertised as public hearing also.
Yeah. Oh, they are, as, as, as part of this public hearing or a separate public hearing?
No, it's part of this one, according to Gateway.
Okay, yeah, you can open it separate, but we didn't open it as a public hearing, right? All right, so you're, you're with the airport, I know.
Yes, yeah.
Is there anybody here from the school? Not, is there?
Oh, he told me he was gonna be here.
That's why I thought too, I don't know why we even go through the.
Yeah, Kelly Shepard told me he was gonna be here.
I don't know why we go through the whole school, maybe. There's nothing to do.
We got time here so I can talk, or, okay, I'm Lee Smith, and, uh. I'm here to discuss the, uh, airport board, what's been going on at Stark County Airport, uh, in the last year. Uh, I'd like to start out by introducing who is on the, uh, board, we have Anthony Novak, who's the attorney. We have Tammy Bailey here, who's the treasurer, we have Pam Harry, she stepped down in May first. She used to be the airport manager, now it's Bill Ransom from Boulder and North Jetson. Um, we also have Rodney Peters, who's the director of maintenance and grounds at the airport. For the actual, uh, appointee for the, by the county commissioners, we have Jim Long, the president, right here. Uh, Lionel Smeed is vice president, uh, Carl Goodrich is secretary, and I'm the assistant secretary. Uh, some of the things that have been going on up, uh, at the Stark County Airport, of course, uh, it brings a wealth of income to the, to the county. People flying, go to the restaurants here, they go to Mark Bailey's, they go to, uh, rent B and Bs out at Bass Lake. Um, we have quite a few jets, so we're passing pictures around, this is jets that have come in here in the last year, uh, to use our airport. And what's so special about our airport is that Plymouth and Windhamack, their runways are shorter, they don't have parallel. Taxiways, so these aircraft don't wanna go to Plymouth or Windhamack, even though there might be customers. From those towns, they actually drive here to Knox and get picked up. Uh, and flown out, because we have a much safer airport to operate on, I didn't know. We also, uh, have, let me just inform you tonight, that we have a doctor that flies in here on a. Uh, regular basis to work at the hospital in his own personal helicopter. We have thirty-six airplanes based at Stark County Airport, we have six businesses, we, of course, as the airport sell fuel to, uh, both jet aircraft. And piston aircraft, we also have Lutheran Air, which is, uh, part of Air Evac, medical helicopter that's based out there. And interesting fact, they're flying about five hundred hours a year, they've done about four hundred and twenty-five pickups. Or gone to accidents, four hundred and twenty-five accidents in the last year, and they've also purchased, uh, from the airport over twenty-eight thousand gallons of jet A. We have, uh, Duggan Aerial Service, he's a crop duster out there, we also have American Air Force. He was also a crop duster, they just finished, uh, getting their hangar up, that was in, in, I was in build last year. Right now, we have, uh, because of the season, about five crop dusters out there spraying right now, working out of the airport. We also have iFly Indiana, which is a powered parachute, that's for sport, uh, but he does rent, uh. Three different buildings from the airport, and we have also Aerolife Aviation, who's an aircraft broker, excuse me. And, uh, they are selling airplanes, they actually have three facilities, one in Minneapolis, one in San Diego. And one here at Knox, and they have bought a jet charter company out of Indianapolis. And in the process, they're talking about moving that here to Stark County Airport. Um, the airport authority was established in nineteen eighty-seven, uh, something that's important, all of our projects that we've, uh, done out at the airport. Uh, we borrow zero money, we, if we can't pay cash, we don't do the, do the project. Um, we'll show, as you see, the budget is, is quite large, but, uh, the government. Um, the government has gone around through the years, they want basically every community to have an airport. And so the government pays ninety-five percent of the cost for the improvements that we do at the airport, the state pays two point five. And then the airport authority pays two point five, one of the projects, uh, that we're finishing, uh, actually this month. We have a AWAS going in out there, and that's a weather reporting, um. System that the pilots listen to, so that when we come in to land at the airport, we know what the weather is, as far as which direction is the wind, which way do we wanna land? What the ceiling is, what the visibility is, if it's really bad, we have to shoot an approach to come in and land, so it's a very important, um. System, and very expensive, it's two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but again, ninety-five percent of that's being paid by the federal government. And then the, uh, two point five by the state, two point five for us, so our actual expense and all of that money is about. Sixty-five hundred bucks, seven thousand dollars. Um, a few years ago, we lengthened the runway to five thousand one feet, which is a length that a lot of the corporate aircraft look for. And again, this is why these aircraft, that you see in the pictures of it coming to Knox, versus going to Windhamack or, or Pluma. Um, so the things that are going on out there right now, we are doing crack sealing. Uh, as you guys know with the roads, it's, you're always fighting the asphalt, trying to keep the, uh, cracks to a minimum. And keep the, uh, making the asphalt land, it'll last as long as possible. Um, also, uh, we have a big fly-in event in July, in, uh, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. And so a lot of people who come through the east coast and down from Florida and all, coming up to Oshkosh, come through our airport. This happens through July twenty-first through the twenty-seventh this year. We had roughly over two hundred airplanes land here at Stark County Airport in that week-long system, and we sold about seven thousand gallons of gas. Uh, during that week. Um, we are, some of the other improvements we're look, working on, is putting up another new set of T hangars. That'll hold, uh, much larger aircraft, uh, aircraft, T hangars we have now, have a forty-foot door. And so that's basically a four-passenger, single-engine airplane that could fit in that hangar. We're hoping to put up, a unit will hold eight aircraft with a forty-eight foot door, which will hold bigger twins and bigger, uh, turboprop aircraft. The CIP is a capital improvement plan, we have a five-year plan, in that plan for us was the AWAS. We're also working on a taxiway to the grass runway that makes it much safer operation, also, uh, enlarging the ramp. And also, like I just discussed, increasing a, another set of T hangars out there. Um, the Stark County Airport, of course, is funded through a, um, tax revenue that, uh. Uh, is a point oh two six three, which was twenty twenty-four, I did not unfortunately get what it was for twenty-five. But I know from twenty-three to twenty-four, it actually, the tax rate went down. Um. The, uh, board meeting, the board meets the third Wednesday of every month at five o'clock, it's open to the public, it's open to everybody here. Uh, to come in to our meetings, um, that's what I have tonight, and we have members here, if you have any questions, we're here to answer.
So the only question I have, and I think you answered some of that, is, is what part of, what part of the airport revenue is coming from the count? Okay.
Which is the tax revenue?
Yeah, which is the two point five, basically, right, so. With, with the fuel that you sell, and the profit on that fuel. Where, where does that money go?
Goes into the airport.
Does it go back into the airport budget to be used for any project or, or anything like that, okay? Cause I know. Several people have said this to me, and I brought it up to the board one time, and I was met with, like I was gonna be hung. The, I don't know what it is now, but the gas here, at, at this airport has always been considerably cheaper than all Australian airports. And I don't know if that's still the case.
Still is the case, it's the Walmart mentality, you make it up on volume.
I, I, I get that.
The nineteen, uh, when I first came here in nineteen, uh, ninety. They sold ten thousand gallons in one year, cause they were trying to make a dollar profit.
Mm-hmm.
If you make a dollar profit and don't sell any gas, you ate nothing, so.
And the fuel gets stale.
Yeah, exactly.
So you have to sell ten thousand gallons at ten cents.
Yeah, it's a huge problem on the visa, on the journey, for sure.
And I, I, I understand that.
So, we can average make about twenty-five cents a gallon, and that is why this airport is on the, on the charts for Indiana being one of the busiest airports. Because people come here to buy their cheap gas.
Glad you explained that, I mean, my experience as a salesman or a different life was, we never sold on volume, never. You probably don't sell on volume. Try to blend it a little bit, depends how big the volume is.
I guarantee you, you raise the price to match higher prices around here, this airport will dry right out. Our other income though is crop, we get, we get a, a lot of money off our crop income, so that's a good portion.
Well, see, I mean, that's something, I have never seen, I don't know if I've ever seen a monthly report from the airport. We should, we should get them every month.
We have a month. We can get them every month.
The auditor gets one.
I said, I sent it to you.
Okay, I just looked at your bugs right now.
Right, to you guys.
That's fine, as you're doing, following, you're supposed to be doing. I mean, the whole thing that, this whole thing ever came to fruition was that. Even though you guys are your separate authority, the county council still has a final say. Because there's everybody on this board that's elected, but you guys didn't wanna come for a couple years until I raised hell and said, oh, we're gonna set your budget on one dollar. And then last year you came, and then you explained everything, and it was no big deal, I mean.
That's why we're here to do.
Yeah, and that's, and it's all.
Yeah, and it's, you guys don't understand what we're doing.
That's all we live in, because when somebody asks some of us a question, I don't know, maybe somebody knows the answer to it, hell, I don't know the answer. I mean, I do more so now than what I ever did, and I think that's all we're looking for, to make sure that. Even though it is a small tax rate, it's still a tax rate, regardless, and I mean, that's. And I think you guys, by coming last year, I mean, it was really simple, there was no fight nor argument, it was just, all we wanted to do was know.
Mm-hmm.
And.
No, we'll be here.
And we appreciate you coming.
You know, in the past years, we had Charlie Weaver come in and explain it to you, and he has moved on, unfortunately, uh. We, we didn't have anybody replacing him, so, we will be here every year.
You do a fine job, you do a fine.
And I appreciate, yeah, I, I was approached the other day, I was asked, well, what six businesses are at the, uh, airport, well, I, I know, can I? And go back and say, well, here's the sixth business.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, cause that makes it, I think that makes it easier on everybody. I mean.
Sure, well, everybody who's paying taxes, I mean, there's people in this county that doesn't even know that the airport exists.
No.
Back when we had the fireworks out there, the, a lot of people in this county, that was the first time they'd ever been to the airport, and it's. Unfortunately, we have fences around it because of, of, of nine eleven and what have you, but everybody is welcome, and the gates are open, you can walk right into the building.
It's a nice airport, it's nice, even the bigger counties around here, and it's a very important component for economic development, we appreciate what you guys.
We appreciate if you, you're more than welcome to come to our meetings, I think it's important that some member does come out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tom?
Yeah, they are excited, boy. I've seen a lot of great.
Just, just out of curiosity, I'm assuming the meetings, you have a month where you're at the airport.
At the airport, and do you get much participation from the public, or?
Zero, at all.
Yeah, so maybe it's something we could read up, something we could put on the county calendar, that, so the people can see it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think anybody's gonna come there raising all kinds of holy. I mean, it's just because somebody knows.
Since I've gone to like, I'm, I'm from like county original, Lansing Airport always had, you know. Little events where you could go and kinda check out your, you know, people have never been around them, you know, check out the different airplanes and.
We did that, we did a lot, but everything kind of came after, skating home after COVID.
Yeah.
Eighties and the nineties, the airport was.
There's no restaurant, is there, right?
No.
You're a part of.
You used to go to the restaurant on ten, Lansing, you know.
Mr. Smith, I didn't catch this gentleman's name.
This is Lionel Smeed.
This is Lionel Smeed.
Lionel, yeah, thank you.
What, when, when are your board meetings?
Third Wednesday of every month, five o'clock.
Wrote it down.
We have one next Wednesday.
All right, I don't have any other questions.
No, thank you.
Have any question?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much for coming, we really appreciate it, so, thank you.
Please try it, please.
Yeah, and you may see some of us at your next meeting. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, nobody's here from the school. You, you have the ability to bring it up on the screen or anything, I, I don't know. No, I don't think I had any questions about that. I don't, me, me either, I guess, such a format, I'm just willing to do what through it. Well, I gotta get, give North Jets a credit, they always, actually, they keep on going down on their spending on things and, you know. It's never been a problem in the past. Why, why we have the public hearing open, does anybody have a comment about North Jet's school budget for the airport? Anybody here?
No.
I think that's everything for the public hearing.
I have one more thing I want to add.
Oh, I knew it.
Sorry, no, just going back to the planning mission, I also wanna make sure that you, it's called out, that we didn't take other things.
I know you did, I know you did.
Trying to help with that, so, we decreased the night meeting stuff by eighteen hundred dollars. For all kind of employee, we decreased the office supplies, so.
Speaking, speaking of, speaking of the meetings in, in per diem, I mean. Explain me, explain this to me, if this is, if this is really what's going on, so. Eastport Murmur gets what, seventy-five, a hundred fifty dollars a meeting, what is it?
Seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five, so.
Planning M V Z A each gets seventy-five dollars.
So if you have an executive meeting, and you have a planning commission immediately following that, or a B Z A, do they get paid two times?
I will say, I didn't think so, but we were just told by somebody that we do.
Separate meeting.
I think, I think the member, if you're on the B Z A and the planning commission, you would get paid twice.
Yeah. I'm on my executive session, I don't know if that's sufficient, couldn't be.
At the planning commission, when we have the executive session, we have an immediate, immediately following a planning.
Howard said, yeah.
It's at the last.
Yeah, if, if it's separate, I can see it, but if you had an executive session that's, and you have another meeting following that right away is. I wouldn't see why you get paid for two meetings. Yeah, you're right.
I didn't think we would, but I was told, we were just told at the last meeting that we do get.
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
Well, that, well, that shouldn't be.
So the people who work in the office are getting paid for being at those meetings too? No.
No.
Well, they, yes, I, right, okay. No, she's talking about like the administrator.
No.
And Robbie and or or the whoever you guys hired. Robbie did not, she never has because she would just take the hour, she would take that time off, so it was a swap up. There was prior this year's budget, I have nothing to do with. They were the two full-time employees in that office were getting paid for nineteen.
But not anymore.
Not anymore. So it takes flex time. They didn't take flex before, but but now, yes, that would be the point.
But to answer your question, Tom, if we have to check, if if it's an executive meeting followed by a by a meeting. We need to stop that, just to get paid one time.
Yeah, I agree.
I got no problem.
I'm there.
I get, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just like Gwen, I get paid seventy-five, I've settled by virtue of my office on the council, I get paid seventy-five dollars a meeting. But the other night, we had a fifteen, well, one of being twenty, but we had a fifteen-minute executive meeting.
And.
I don't expect to be paid hundred and fifty dollars, seventy-five dollars for fifteen minutes. If if, you know, if if that, if that, and I don't think Gwen does either, if that's the case, we need to stop that.
Need to stop.
To answer your question.
Yeah.
So, looking at page twenty-two, that further per diem is listed for the plan commission, it was thirty-eight hundred and twenty-one four. Moved it up to seventy-two hundred and seventy-five hundred, so.
Did, are you are you raising the amount of per diem for next year?
No, not from twenty twenty-five, from twenty twenty-four, it almost doubled.
Okay.
Yeah, they doubled it, cause I looked at our, when I was looking at the B Z A and the planning. And Mike and I looked at it, I I looked back at twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and then we cut it in twenty twenty-five.
No, you raised it in twenty twenty. Yeah.
Yeah.
With a thirty-eight hundred, seventy-two million.
Seventy-two.
Maybe it went, I think it went from fifty dollars a meeting to seventy-five, if I remember right.
That that was done last year, that was this year, we're getting paid seventy-five.
Yeah, that 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 would, that that would have been the twenty-four to twenty-five budget, that would, that would make sense.
And now you're saying the per diem says it's more?
No, same, same, same. We were looking, we were looking at twenty-four. Cause it went up, it went up like thirty percent.
Yeah.
He didn't raise that.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Twenty twenty-six, we did not raise that, so.
So, the thing about the the meetings thing, that's not a, that's not a council thing, that should be a a plan commission or what? Or somebody, cause if.
Yeah, I don't know, you'll have to, I would say that, you know, bring it up to Mike, maybe.
Cause I guess if you're not gonna do, I guess we can just cut the per diem. And then you guys will figure out, come more for us.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I'm already there, so.
Well, okay.
I only had one question, we got a, we uh got an email from the uh solid waste board.
Oh, yeah, but she's not a public here though.
Right.
She should have been, I mean, she's.
It's part of the budget, I mean, we didn't ask her to call, I'm just saying, no, she's she's, should we talk about that or not?
Yes, it's it's part of the county's budget that's on gateway, I, it's the form, her form three, I'm the one who has to submit it. Same with the airport, I'm the one who has to submit it, so she really, this public hearing is for her.
We, we had, we had a meeting, um, what's today, Thursday, we had a meeting Tuesday. And it was a unanimous vote by the board.
By the solid waste board, okay.
To approve, to approve the the budget as, because. There's no.
Are, do you sit on that work?
Yeah. There's no direct, as everybody knows, there's no direct tax money, but there is indirect tax money by the by the fee. But this year, they're gonna have the same events, but this year, we're gonna do, or you can actually bring one TV for free. Instead of the twenty, instead of the twenty dollars per TV, so, yeah, so.
So here's here's one thing, though, and this is just, I don't know if you have, you others hear this, but I still have a lot of people, we brought this up many times over the years. About either A, getting a discounted garbage service like Hamlet did for their people. Or a a or just accounting wide garbage and um uh recycling, but. I don't know about the rest of you, but it just goes up and down all the time, it usually goes up to garbage services, but it's forty-eight dollars in Hamlet. I think mine's like a hundred and seventy or something, I don't know, it's great.
We didn't, we didn't get a discount.
Year, thirty-three months.
Well, Hamlet didn't get a discount because of solid waste district.
That's one thing, nine dollars, it will be ours for one camp.
That's my, that might be what mine.
That's usually about.
Yeah, somehow got thirty-eight.
Forty-eight dollars for like three months.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's recycling too.
So the question is, is can the solid waste board negotiate that on behalf of the county and try to get a county?
It probably has to have everybody in it.
You know, people who live in the city limits of Knox, we pay for garbage and recycling on our water bill and then we pay for the solid waste as well.
Well, we do too.
Yeah.
And Hamlet too, we get recycling every every two weeks, we can talk about it.
Well, it's like we all do, I I'm not saying include it in the solid waste bill though, I'm saying.
No.
You have to put a negotiated price.
Yeah.
Hamlet did that, it's just it worked out good for Hamlet.
Yeah, it's it's pretty cheap.
Yes.
What you think like about fast, if you, um, in general, who said fast, like it's a very good deal for fast light residents?
The property owners.
The property owners.
Then maybe they won't wanna do it then, yeah, right, yeah, I don't think everybody would, they get opt-in.
You know, the the only thing bad about that, you know, Dave, you get out English Lake or something. You know, where there's a house every two miles. I mean, there's no way anybody's gonna give them the same rate they give like Hamlet or Nile because there's all that value.
Yeah.
So something's blown out, man.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
So once you approve that, you cannot add money to anything, right?
Well, well, once we prove this amount, we can move things around.
Yeah.
But this amount will be the amount.
But we can take away somewhere else.
Put it somewhere else.
To put it somewhere else, as long as we do not go over that.
Joanne's.
Yes. Sixty million, whatever it was.
Um, I have a question about the recycling that's on the tax bill, so does anybody know anything about that?
Solid waste.
Solid waste.
Recycling.
Yeah, it's solid.
It is?
It is, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I thought it said recycling on.
It is recycling, but but it is, but it is a solid waste. As you know, there there used to be three different sites, I think, in the county, maybe four, where everybody would take the recyclables to.
And their couches.
Well, then, yes, yeah, but we use motor oil, yeah, I just saw the county highway.
I didn't know that.
There's a, there's a bins out there.
And no, I don't.
Still a county recycling, it's just.
No, there's, 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 there's twenty bins out there.
It's still the same.
I didn't either.
You don't, hey, but, and metals are. Yes, cardboard, glass, paper.
I just last year.
No, no, no.
Yes, and I didn't know.
You don't have to pay. That's, that's, that's the reason you pay for the solid waste district.
I had no idea.
It's been there for.
But we do have to pay for TV. It's just.
Yes, because because. Cardboard, metal, some plastic, glass, I don't know, there's like, there's like.
Did you say motor oil?
No, that's what they were putting out there.
No, we we were really snide because when we had the bins throughout the county, people would dump couches, mattresses, motors, that's why they had to take.
Yeah, they ruined it for everybody else.
So, so most places like O'Reilly's.
They take it, yeah.
They'll take it, Coop will take it.
I know that, but that's why when you said motor oil, I was surprised, that's why I was like.
And then there, then every year, there's the household, the household waste events where you can take all your paint and the the oil paint, latex paint.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I've seen that, I just didn't realize.
And so just so you know, I actually went last year to the recycling center in Elkhart.
You can put stuff there.
Well, I couldn't believe, no, this is where they, this is where all the stuff comes to.
Yeah.
And what was going on there, I couldn't believe it, it was utterly amazing.
Where they sorted and everything?
Yes.
But yeah, but like, if you want, yeah, but if you wanna buy paint and things like that at a discount, you go to that place and buy it instead of buying it at the store.
Hmm, yeah.
It's a long drive though.
No, it's good for there.
Not utilizing that, why as a taxpayer are you getting charged for it?
You're expected to utilize.
Yeah, it's your choice to utilize it or not, I didn't say that, but it's true, and they're open six days a week.
Okay, so who's in charge of making that known, like, um?
I didn't know, I didn't know anybody didn't know.
Well, it's something that Todd can bring up to the solid waste board, their marketing, maybe we didn't have. We get it, we more visible on our website.
We put in the, we put in the, every year we advertise when we do the um, the household hazardous waste stands. And that's done, that's done at the same, that's done at the same spot, you can go out there Monday through Friday and it's half a day Saturday. And just drop it off.
Haven't for eighteen years.
But there is one thing that 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 is bad though, is that if you have animals, which I do, and so I go through an enormous amount of feed bags. We don't recycle those in this county, it would be nice to still look into that too, I forget what they call that, like there's grade seven, like the whatever, this.
Yeah, those those poly bags.
Those poly bags, I mean, and I know that the, cause I'm this small time, but I know the people that are going through big. Buying the animals have massive amounts of those bags.
To Dave's point, that's, that's one thing, that's one thing they brought up, were the feed bags, the ones that are meshed and.
Right, yeah, she was trying to get a company that would do it.
This company, I went there and they showed me.
So it's just the mesh ones, they don't take?
Yeah. It's card.
It's like my regular.
If it's paper and it has the recyclable seal, it's safe, because if it, if it has certain types of coating on the paper, can't recycle that either, so you gotta look at it.
To their defense, they take it, but they can't recycle it. It 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 ends up in a landfill.
Well, she tries to avoid that though, she tries to check it as much as she can and make sure people aren't dropping things that aren't.
I, no, 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 plastic bag.
I think so, I think they're closed one day during the week, Todd.
What?
They didn't know that.
They close one day during the week?
No, no, okay.
They're open, they're open Monday, Monday, Monday through Friday, I I think it's eight to four, right, and then they're open from eight to noon on Saturday.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And there is a, there is a way to plant a paper in tax bills, the reporter's office did it last year.
It's true.
Yeah. To tell everyone, hey, this is what this is for, this is where it is, this is what we utilize, this is what we take, and we can put it right to tax bill every year.
Well, we can, I'll give, we can do some advertising, I mean, yeah, I mean, I I'm shocked, I I'm really shocked. I mean, obviously, social media is driving the paper though, if there's any more, throw it away, it won't even open.
I don't, I I didn't go up very kind and say what do I hope.
Do that, that's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
We might get an excess amount of cardboard and they can't burn, it's too wet out, or there's, like, drive it to one of that.
There you go, all right, any other, any other business on public hearing? Okay, we have most closed, have most closed second?
I'll second.
All favor, uh, okay, with that being said.
Who seconded it, I'm sorry to be asking.
Where is the um, where is that, do you know what that total amount is?
Seconded?
I'll listen to my second, okay.
What was that, it was four sixteen, four forty, or forty-four, what?
Showing the world.
Well, we're moving along, I I don't know where it's at, where the total amount is.
Now, right now?
It was sixteen, four thirty-four, what? No, this, this, that's not it.
I'm sorry, I gave it to Kay and Howard, there was sixteen million something, it sounded.
This was from when we.
What am I making?
I didn't know it was on this paper. Your pain got it, he's got it.
Motion to approve the sixteen million, four hundred fourteen dollars and what is it, eight hundred seven?
No, eight hundred seven thousand, yeah.
Sixteen million, what?
Four, four hundred and fourteen, is that right?
Yes.
Five thousand.
Sixteen million, four hundred fourteen. Thousand, eight hundred seven dollars, yeah. Okay.
Hold on, when I came, there were some things that were wrong in the big budget with, I think the survey or something else. Did that get reflected in that total?
Total number, I don't think it, that it, that it should have reflected whatever changes were made.
It was just the one.
Just the one, I just knew there were a couple when I got a survey or dip.
Yes, it's, it's about. Um.
Got changed.
Yeah, change the whole.
Yeah, so it's like fifteen hundred dollars.
Does Kay want to amend her motion?
And let me tell you what, let me tell you what the difference, you know, you wanna know the difference?
Yeah.
You too.
Thank you, Roberta. So it's another thirteen hundred dollars.
Add, add thirteen. Thirteen oh.
Three and two. Still really listening to her in the school.
Okay, because I did what the council told me to do.
Is that right?
She. They told me to fix, uh.
They told me to leave it and they can fix it.
Well, they didn't fix it yet, so.
Like leave the bigger amount and they can fix it.
No, the commissioner's told you that. Right, but then they have, say, they do it that way, they just don't. Yes, they can.
There we go.
They'll be cutting from some.
We'll just take it away from somewhere else.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah. Sixteen, four.
There's gonna be the pressure.
Sixteen, thirty-two, five twenty-five, okay, I need to amend that motion.
Okay, okay.